Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Antor. Excuse me. Bolter. Vice Chair Breavy.
Here.
Commissioners Bukowski.
Present.
Burl.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
LaGrand.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Skaggs.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Cherstick.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 members present and two absent. You have a quorum.
In honor of Memorial Day, I wanted to have a prayer specific to that occasion. And when I was doing some research online, I saw that various presidents, including President Truman, declared a proclamation that Memorial Day be a day of prayer against war ever happening again. And he wanted 11:00 a.m. on Memorial Day from, I think, the year 1950 on to be the hour of prayer. So at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, you can pray, but for right now, join me in this prayer for Memorial Day. "In the quiet sanctuaries of our own hearts, let each of us name and call on the One whose power over us is great and gentle, firm and forgiving, holy and healing. You who created us, who sustain us, who call us to live in peace, hear our prayer this day. Hear our prayer for those who put the welfare of others ahead of their own and give us hearts as generous as theirs. Hear our prayer for those who gave their lives in the service of others and accept the gift of their sacrifice. Help us to shape and make a world where we will lay down the arms of war and turn our swords into plowshares for a harvest of justice and peace. Comfort those who grieve the loss of their loved ones and let your healing be the hope in our hearts. Hear our prayer this day and in your mercy answer us in the name of all that is holy. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Road Commissioner. I'll now move to item number five, which is special order of business. And before somebody raises a point of order, we'll do allow for three of these special orders of business if the chair so allows. So I do so allow. We're going to try to get three of these in today. We'll start with the Road Commission. Warren is here. There he is. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning.
I'll try to keep this brief, but be happy to entertain any questions you may have. But before I begin, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to present this this morning, kind of the state of the county roads, I think of it as. So I brought a lot of the people that are truly responsible for the team effort that we undertake each and every year in service to the citizens and businesses of Kent County. I'd like to introduce them if you allow me to. Jerry Byrne, our deputy director, he's...Jerry, stand up or wave your hand. You see him on TV a lot, so he's got a recognizable face. He's our deputy managing director, heads up our operations. Also, Wayne Harrell, our head of engineering, also assistant deputy director. Wayne? Steve Ruse, he heads up our division of facilities and equipment, so responsible for keeping the big green trucks rolling. Tim Hogsmann, our traffic and safety engineer. Macy Barczewski, our director of finance. And Maura Lamro, our communications manager. I think I got everybody. So anybody with a Kent County Road Commission logo is part of the team there, so...Again, it's an opportunity that we enjoy coming before you. See if I got this right. Wanted to start off with a little bit of kind of the principles that we follow here at the Road Commission. Think these are very important because it's things that we are dedicated to. First, being responsive to the public. We take public service and that responsibility very seriously. We try to answer the phone when people call. We try to give them the information that they are seeking, whether it be why are cars going too fast, or when are you going to fix XYZ road? Sometimes they don't always appreciate the answer they get, but they get an answer. We try to be responsive quickly and get out and take that responsibility of public service very, very seriously. Fiscally responsible equally is important. We remind people that while we do not rely on any county general funds or property taxes, it's frequently a question that people ask, well, I pay taxes, why aren't you fixing my roads? So we have a lot of education materials. We talk about the fact that we rely on really the state MTF, the Michigan Transportation Fund primarily. That's over half of our revenue. Surprisingly, most of that comes from registration fees that we pay. So registration fees in Michigan actually lead the revenue source for transportation agencies around the state. So the gas tax is becoming less and less a portion of that. And one of the things that our staff and our board are very proud of is the fact that we have zero liabilities when it comes to things like OPEB or pension liabilities. It's a legacy that we've inherited and we hold that very near and dear to our house, if you will. And it allows us to do things more efficiently with the dollars we do receive, so we don't have those huge legacy costs. Strategic planning, something that I drag the board and the staff through usually every three, four years. And it's very important. It provides that connection between the desires and the thoughts of the board and helping us to identify not only our mission, but strategic objectives throughout the year. And it really helps to form the foundation for our budget. So there's a direct tie between our budgeting, between our mission, and those annual performance measures that we are seeking. Finally, collaboration and coordination. If we have inherited anything as staff with the Road Commission, it's one of partnership. We are very close partners with not only county board of commissioners, but our townships especially. We are very active in communication on a monthly basis, on a daily basis with our townships. We provide them information about what our plans are for future improvements. Helps to coordinate things like utilities and developments. So that collaboration and coordination with the townships is very important, as well as being kind of a regional leader here in West Michigan. We work closely with the other municipalities, with the surrounding county road commissions, and with the state. As you may know, that we are responsible under contract with the state for maintaining the state trunk lines. That's routine maintenance only. It's not the construction project. So while we partner with them and coordinate with them on construction projects, those are led strictly by the Road Comi...or excuse me, by the State Department of Transportation. A little bit about our budget. We've provided you recently a copy of our budget for this coming year. It contains a lot of information, so I'm not going to go over individual projects, but again, there's our five-year program in that document, so that's very helpful for the townships, for the other municipalities, for MDOT in terms of project coordination. They know what we're planning, what the timing is. It lists some of the funding sources. But generally speaking, I think this 2022 budget, which represents about $94 million, kind of says it well in terms of the portion of dollars that actually go into construction, preservation-type projects. But routine maintenance is a big portion of our budget as well. You can't keep good roads in good condition without proper maintenance, preventative maintenance especially. State trunk line fund, that averages right around $10 to $12 million per year, but we do a lot of extra work for MDOT under what's called transportation work orders. So MDOT comes to us to actually contract a lot of projects, a lot of minor improvements throughout the system. They can do it more cost-effectively and more timely if they contract with us, and then we subcontract that out. So again, part of that overall coordination. Winter maintenance, about 5% of the budget. Incidentally, one of the things that people are surprised to hear is that when it comes to winter maintenance, only about 20% of that cost is people. Most of it comes in terms of fuel costs, material costs, sand, salt, that type of thing. So just a little kind of overview of some of the spending. In this presentation is a map that shows a couple things. One, completed projects in red. These are some of the major improvements on our county primary system. And again, county roads are divided between primary roads and local roads. So we have about 670 miles of county primary roads. Those are roads, the high-volume roads, 10 Mile, Northland Drive, 84th Street, 100th Street. But then there's 1,300 miles of roads that are called local roads. Those are the subdivision streets in the township, some of the minor collector streets. Most of them are paved. About 300 miles are still unpaved. Some by design, but every year it seems like we have two or three miles of gravel surface roads that the townships desire to have paved. And we do that on a 55-45 cost split. The townships are also investing heavily in those local roads, and they pay about 50% for things like resurfacing or some other work like chip seal. So again, they're investing heavily, and I'll get in that a little bit more later, but just wanted to give you an idea where some of the major improvements are this year and completed projects from last year. And again, in this document, we list all the projects going out for five years. But we do what's called a mix of fixes. So depending upon the function of the road, the type of road it is, what kind of service it provides, and especially its condition, will dictate the type of improvement. So sometimes we're doing a full-depth reconstruction to remove...to not only improve the road, but that actually helps in the springtime by removing those springtime weight restrictions. So we are systematically going through some of these high-volume commercial corridors and making those types of improvements. We've got a lot more work to do, but we're chipping away at it. Resurfacing, about eight miles planned this year. And when we measure things, we measure it in lane miles. So that's about four miles of resurfacing on a two-lane road, for example. And then preservation. Preservation is something that is state-of-the-art in terms of good practice throughout the country. And it's something that we've led here in Michigan for a number of years, where we're actually doing what's called chip seals or microsurface. That's a thin layer of material that goes down on the road, and it keeps the road in good condition longer. So we're more cost-effective in terms of managing our assets if we do this preservation-type So you may ask yourself, well, how do our roads kind of stack up to other roads? And we do what's called a Pacer rating. We measure sort of the condition assessment of each and every road in our system once a year. And we're able to define those in terms of good, fair, poor. So a good road is something that's nearly new construction, no potholes, no cracks. When it gets into that fair category, like myself, a little gray hair, a little deterioration, few wrinkles here and there, it's time at that point to try to do that preservation treatment. But we don't have, you know, all the money we need, so some of these fair roads fall into that poor category. At that point, they're really not good candidates for preservation, and we do some of the heavier-duty resurfacing or reconstruction. But Kent County right now, 77% in what we call that good and fair category. So how that measures against Oakland, for example, they're at 72. Some of our surrounding county partners, Muskegon, Ottawa, a little bit less. Sorry, Al. Cities and villages collectively, so statewide average. Again, you know, part of our objective is to have the premier county road system in the state. And while we may not be leading in this particular category, I think when we look at some of our peers, you could say that the road, county roads in Kent County are better than most. And our objective through our strategic plan is to get that to 90% by 2025. So in this case, I kind of contrast some of our primary road investment versus our local road investment. Just to focus on the primary roads, again, that's 660-plus miles. We have specific targets each and every year where we measure the number of road improvements, that combination, that mix of fixes for each year. And so in the orange line, you can see our targets per year. Now, up until the pandemic hit, right up until 19...or excuse me, 2019, we were exceeding those targets. Again, that mix of fixes, those preservation, reconstruction, resurfacing, lane miles. Along come the pandemic, a couple things happened. One, our revenues went down, the economy went down, registration fees went down, people weren't consuming as much gas, and so we had a clear loss of revenue during that period of time. That's been compounded the last couple years, where while gas consumption has rebounded, registration fees haven't rebounded as much. You go to any car lot, and you'll see that there aren't very many new cars sitting on the lot, so people aren't turning over those registration fees. And every time you buy a new car, you know your registration fee goes up. So it's been kind of a double whammy on our revenues in that respect. So we had to change some of our priorities, too. During the pandemic, we didn't do as much of the preservation treatments because they're labor-intensive. More people on equipment, closer together, so we did more reconstruction and widening. Again, we don't...can't afford to do as many lane miles with those heavier types of improvements because they cost much more per lane mile. So we've had to readjust. We're still kind of holding our own in terms of our condition projection, but I doubt very much that we're going to meet that 90%, just because revenues have gone down and we're also getting hit really hard this year with probably a 15% to 20% increase in material costs. It's just costing everybody to do the same thing a lot more money. So we're, again, this year projected not to hit that lane mile target, so I'm thinking that we're going to probably be hovering over the next few years at that 80...75% good, fair, poor level. On the other side, townships have more money right now. And you can see that, again, we partner with the townships more or less on a 50-50 cost split, and those investments from the townships are going up. In 2016, for example, they were investing collectively about $4 million per year. This year, we projected to be $8 million. And part of our strategic plan is when the townships come and request that we...that they match...that we match their dollars for investment, we do so. And we're able to maintain our budget and make our investments, but township demand for investments is going up. And so we are continuing to partner with them in that regard. We're not just about roads. We have 173 bridges in Kent County. Some of the big, obvious bridges like Knapp Street, they don't all look like that. Some of them are actually culverts with a 20-foot span. That's called a bridge as well. We're unique in Kent County in that we have done a tremendous amount of work back in the '60s, '70s to rebuild these bridges, and we're in a maintenance mode now. So we do a lot of work every year. We're dedicated to bridge preventative maintenance. And that allows us to be one of the few counties in the state with 0% structurally deficient bridges. Statewide, the number is 14%. So I feel very proud that our bridges here in Kent County are in great shape. I mentioned before, you can't keep good roads in good condition without proper preventative maintenance. When the 2015 gas tax was enacted, we enacted a policy that we were going to take 25 cents out of each of those new dollars and put it into preventative maintenance. Again, we've got to get the water off the road. Drainage is vitally important because water sits on the road, continues to sit on there, deteriorates it. You have potholes, you have conditions where you have the road deteriorate beyond what it should. So getting those berms off, making sure we have good crown on the road, good drainage is vitally important to maintaining good roads. Trees and vegetation, similarly. If roads don't dry out, they deteriorate faster. So we try to maintain a proper tree canopy where there's trees, but from a safety standpoint as well as just from a maintenance standpoint, it's important that we do proper vegetation management. We try to innovate reasonably with regard to winter maintenance. The introduction several years of you may see on our big green snowplow trucks, wingplows. We can actually plow a greater width if we put down that wingplow off to the right. Now occasionally, people get a little robust, and they try to pass the snowplow truck on the right, and they run into this wingplow. But so we've actually outfitted those wingplows with warning lights so that people can see those. And you may see the green lights on our trucks. Green light penetrates fog and rain and snowfall much better than yellow. Don't ask me why, but we were leaders in getting a statewide law that allowed green lights on public service vehicles. We're actually installed some remote sensing-type equipment around the county. That helps us to measure temperature, not only the air temperature, but quite often the road temperature is drastically different than the air temperature. And so it helps us in terms of measuring temperature, humidity, those types of things, to properly put the right mix of chemicals down on the road. And so we continue to seek innovations in terms of winter maintenance as well. With that, that concludes my comments. On behalf of the board of county road commissioners, thank you for, again, allowing us to do what we do. We appreciate being of service to the citizens. We've got a great board, and so I thank you for appointing good road commissioners.
Good. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the work that you all have done on our roads. I feel very safe when I'm traveling the roads, and I don't have a bunch of potholes and things that I have to deal with. So thank you for that. While I'm looking at the composition of the board, I'd like to see more diversity. You have six members, five males, one woman, and absolutely no people of color. And we could probably mix that up a little bit better to represent the people that are traveling the road. So thank you.
Thank you. Gonna bounce that back to us, aren't you? Sorry.
I was tempted, but I...
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay. Commissioner Jones?
So I have been a big fan from the very beginning of being a commissioner for eight years with the partnership with the Road Commission. As I let people know, it's this board that does appoint the Road Commission members for the board, and then you have your own budget and process for taking care of the roads. And very early on, I sat down with you to understand how the Road Commission operates. And of course, the quote that comes out regularly when Steve is at the podium, or if you talk to him, "Good roads cost money and bad roads cost more."
Right.
So that's one that I quote all the time for you, and I can be a firsthand supporter of the statement that you are great with communication. When I have a resident that contacts me with a road issue, I have them contact you, and you are very responsive, or you and members of your team, in getting back to that resident. As you've mentioned, they might not necessarily like the answer, but there will be an answer, and they will reach someone at the Road Commission. As a matter of fact, this afternoon, I'll be spending time with you and some of your team at a township with a question on a road issue. So for that, keep up the good work. We really appreciate the partnership, and your leadership is phenomenal for this team.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Antor?
Morning, Steve.
Good morning.
I went and bought some diesel fuel the other day, and I think I was paying like $5.30 a gallon. I didn't know how much of your fleet is diesel compared to gas, but you guys have stockpiles that you rely on of fuel, or are you just subject to the market right now as well?
I'll try not to mess this up, but Steve can help me out. But we have a contract each year. We buy it on what's called a rack price. Okay? So we have a contract, and at each of our facilities, we have tanks, so we're taking, you know, fuel, gasoline, and diesel. Most of the heavy-duty fleet is all diesel. So we're getting hit, just like everyone. Now, we buy it at the wholesale level, but we're still getting hit. I think...I think we're $1 million or close to it, $900,000 extra this year for fuel?
I actually went out and toured your north facility, and it was during the winter, and the place was beautiful. I mean, the amount of care that goes into just maintaining the inside. I wouldn't say it'd eat off the floor, but almost. It looked really nice. I can tell there's a lot of pride that goes into everything.
Absolutely.
100%. I was so impressed. And I was also impressed with the fact that you recycle all that oil to heat your buildings with, which is really cool. Most people just dump their oil. You have a system where you can recycle it and so on and so forth. I also just wanted to mention, this is a really good man right here. No, you are. You're a good man. You do a great job, and you represent the Road Commission very well, and I really do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner LaGrand?
Two little questions. At first, you said the split with the townships was 55-45, and then you said it was kind of half and half. And I'm just wondering, what is that 55?
It's 55-45 on construction.
On construction.
So when we're taking a gravel road and we're doing the heavy-duty work, the drainage, the ditching, and then getting it prepped for paving, that's 55% from the township.
Oh, okay.
And then 50-50 is the additional work that we may do, like microsurfacing or chip sealing, to keep those paved roads in good condition.
And then just another detail. When you said we had 0%...
Structurally deficient.
Structurally. Who does that and those examinations or, you know, those inspections, and how often is that done?
Right. We're required to inspect those bridges, and they're all certified inspectors. So we're required by the state and by the federal government to submit bridge evaluations, and that goes into determining its structural... and that goes into determining its structural deficiency or lack thereof. So, bridges are generally considered to be either structurally deficient, if they've got severe deterioration or something wrong, or functionally deficient, if they're just not designed properly. The clearances are substandard by today's standard, the lane widths are substandard. But, so, but the big issue statewide is there's a lot of bridges statewide, fourteen percent that are structurally deficient. Some have to be closed, or some have to have significant weight restrictions. But, and that affects, I mean, anything from school bus routing to emergency response. You know, so, bridges are critical, especially in Michigan. We have a lot of streams and lakes and waterways. So, yeah, it's, it's something that, again, it's, it's a measure of, of how well the people came before us have managed the system, and we continue to pour in probably, if you looked at our budget, about a half a million per year that we can use to either match grants or just do the work ourselves. So, this year, if you're traveling Knapp Street Bridge this summer, you're gonna be held up because we're doing a major deck preservation work on that. We're not closing the bridge. There's nothing structurally wrong with it. It's just the work we need to do to that deck to keep it in good condition, which helps the structure. It's kinda like fixing your roof and keeping your foundation safe, so.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Steve, for being here, and thanks for all the work that you and your organization do. I think we all can say we're really proud of our Road Commission here, so thank you very much. I have a, one comment and two questions. So, number one, I think this is the first time I've had the opportunity to see this report, and I really appreciate it. I was shocked to see how little of the budget, let me, let me rephrase it, how well you maintain the roads in the wintertime with so little of the budget going to that, because I would've expected that that winter maintenance piece would've been more than that five percent. And I think we've got a lot of agencies that do winter road maintenance in West Michigan, and I think the county is one of the ones that does it better than some of the other ones, I'll say, without naming names. The long-term matching, you've mentioned the matching program. When we were at, when I was at Plainfield Township, we took great advantage of that. I think it's a wonderful thing. I'm glad to see that more townships are investing in that. And I know you said you, it's part of the strategic plan to continue that program. Do you anticipate that that's gonna become more difficult for the Road Commission to do? And, and are there, do you have ideas about how we might be able to continue that in such a state?
Well, I guess the well isn't endless. You know, we, again, inherited that legacy of township cooperation, and, and I appreciate the comment because not, not many other road commissions around the state do this. Match township contributions to the extent that we do. So, it's, it's part of the annual budgeting. We always encourage the townships to let us know as soon as possible, you know, what dollars that they're planning to invest. So, you know, we haven't reached the point yet where we say, hey, you know, that's it. We, we don't have any additional dollars to match or contributions. But, and I don't know where that point is, quite honestly. As long as we're able to maintain our primary road improvement program and maintain some of the other responsibilities, we haven't reached the point yet where we're saying, no, we don't have any more money to match.
Sure.
But, there's a state, by state law, and I don't wanna get in it too deeply, but we're able to actually take some of our revenue up to a certain point and transfer it into what's called the local road program. And, and again, we, we have shifted a lot of that money that we're able to do under state law into that local road program. I will tell you that if you compare the condition rating of our primaries at seventy-seven percent, the local road system isn't that high. Okay? So, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on that, and it's, it's over nine-hundred miles of, of local roads. Not all the townships contribute at the same levels. I think this year, I think nineteen out of twenty-one townships are taking advantage of that matching program at different levels. Of course, they have different population bases. Plainfield's been a major participant, Cascade has, some have not. But, it just depends on, you know, sort of the local, the local lay of the land.
Sure, sure. One more question, if I can, Mr. Chair. Really briefly, you mentioned the strain on materials and that being a, you know, and the cost of such materials and that being a challenge for you guys. Are you anticipating that might get compounded as we start to see local, state, federal dollars being spent on ARPA projects and that sort of stuff, where we might see a further strain, particularly on labor, in the next couple of years? Or is that not something that you're concerned about as an agency?
I wish I knew. You know, we've been able to absorb, you know, the, the increases on, and it's primarily, when I talk about materials, hot-mixed asphalt. That's, that's the bread and butter. That's the material we use on most of our roads. Each project differs in terms of the percentage of that. I think labor is probably a bigger question mark. You know, we're, we're blessed in this area. We have, I think, four asphalt plants, and so, our, our prices are relatively good compared to others out further. But, I think labor is, is a big issue. I'll give you an example. You know, we partner with the townships on what's called brining of their liquid dust layer on their gravel roads. Labor was a problem for the supplier that gives us that or sells us that material where they used to actually apply it. Well, because of a labor shortage, they couldn't get enough CDL drivers to actually not only sell us the project, product, but then apply it. So, we had to go out and acquire the equipment and begin to apply that material ourselves. And we've done a great job of it. I'm not so sure I'd go back to having them do it. Our people do it better and, and more efficiently. But, that's an example where labor is becoming a bigger and bigger issue. CDLs are required for these individuals to drive our snowplow trucks, a commercial driver's license. And those are regulated by the federal government in terms of eligibility. So, any type of, you know, drug or alcohol testing that goes awry, you know, they, they lose their CDL license. It's a little bit different than state law.
Sure.
So, labor is becoming, I think, a bigger and bigger issue, as I think, long-term, more than the cost of materials.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Thanks for all your work.
Commissioner Womack.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Warren. How you doing?
Morning.
Thank you for all your service and your work, and I'm just very proud that seventy-seven of our percentages of our roads are good.
Yeah, good.
When, when it comes to labor picking up there, how many employees do you have, would you say?
We have about two-hundred and seventy full-time, and then depending upon the season, we'll have another fifty, sixty, we like, in terms of part-time labor, seasonal labor.
And do you know what the percentage would be when it comes to diversity?
We, I, I couldn't tell you the number offhand, but we are very aggressive, in my opinion, on seeking qualified individuals of, of any race. And we've worked with recruiting in the inner city. We've worked to recruit in a number of, of venues. So, what that percentage is, I couldn't tell you, but again, we work hard at trying to recruit individuals. We partner even with the Community College in Ferris State on trying to attract not only minority candidates, but any candidates to achieve a career in public service.
Do you have any partnerships with, like, Urban League and just some different routes where people, 'cause a lot of the young people and colleagues are, they're training for things that might be beyond, you know, working on our roads, which is, is a great job, of course. But, do you have any other community partners?
Yeah, they could.
And just looking for a way that we at the county can help.
Yeah.
Especially with the labor shortages that are out there.
Absolutely. Yeah, I could follow up with some information from our HR department in terms of our activities to recruit, you know, countywide, including, you know, the inner city or areas where there's a higher percentage of minority candidates. Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much. And I, and once again, I wanna commend you on your work at the whole commission, the seventy-seven percent of good, great roads. But, I, I also want to ask, when you talked about some of the revenue that comes in and the gas tax, since the governor's office has made roads a priority, have we saw any extra funds coming in to help with these road situation?
I'm really glad you asked that question, 'cause, no. The answer is no. I'm still scratching my head a little bit because, you know, the state, townships, county receive allocations under ARPA. And we have not been a recipient of those dollars. Now, there's a number of counties around the state, Mount Calm, for example, who have provided their Road Commission with a portion of those revenues. But, I think part of what we're seeing at the township level is, you know, they have more money now, whether they're taking their ARPA money specifically or taking other revenues where ARPA kinda backfills, I don't know. But, we're seeing an uptick in those township revenues for road improvements, but we have not received, either through the reauthorization of the federal program or the new budget with the state. Now, there's been discussions about, you know, providing additional dollars for local roads specifically, but that, that's yet to be seen. So, I appreciate the question.
Thank you for that answer, and, and hopefully, some of the money that's coming through the counties, townships, and cities will make its way to the Road Commission to help with these roads, and hopefully, that is the state's intention, I hope. And one of the question, last question I'll finish with is what would, what type of things would you like to see done at the state level to help what you're doing with these roads? As a, a lot of us may be voices here at county, when we put our legislative priorities out there, that we could consider for legislative priorities for the state to help with the roads?
Stability in funding. Again, we work hard to project our funding and put together a road improvement program that goes out five years. It takes a while to get these projects ready. So, you know, these, these sudden ups and downs in, in funding, you know, sometimes are problematic, 'cause it takes time to get the environmental clearance and to get the, the shippo clearance and to get all these things done and designed and incorporated into a project. The more stable the funding is, the better we can do our long-range planning. Now, in the, in the case of ARPA, I'll go back to that, it's good to hear that those dollars need, don't have to be spent for three, four years, right? Because it takes a while to get projects ready to go, depending on the nature of the project. Preservation projects, we can crank those out pretty quickly, within the year. Reconstruction projects sometimes take a couple of years to get ready. So, having that stability long-term, I wish the state would figure out a, a better method of, with Act Fifty-One, the MTF. Michigan is one of the few states in the, in the country that puts a sales tax on gasoline. It'd be nice to see that come off and those dollars go into roads, so that you have a dedicated source of funding that, 'cause I think the public expects when they fill up their gas tax or they fill out their registration fee, that all that money's going into roads. And unfortunately, that's not the truth. Six percent is going into other things. So, that, that would be another plus. The other thing is, we're, you know, I think the future is a little uncertain with the fact that the fleet statewide, more and more people are driving electric vehicles. So, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but how they then pay for the roads that they're driving on is a big question mark.
Well, thank you very much. I surely appreciate you, Mr. Warren. It's been a very informative conversation with you. I thank you once again for this information, sir.
Thank you.
We'll need another hour to address how we get the state funds released here, but we'll do that at a later time. Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning.
My mic on? There it is. Just a comment and a question. Commissioner Womack kinda asked my question. I was really interested in that. But, I've had the opportunity to work with you and your staff over my tenure here, and I just wanna thank them for their patience, so. I live in a very rural, you know, area still, or suburban area, and you mentioned a little bit, but there's a lot of gravel roads. Some of my townships are still trying to pave roads, believe it or not. And I just wanted to mention that you keep those roads, I'm, we're on those in the ambulance all the time, because we have to go down gravel roads. But, just, it's not only the primary roads that you have to worry about. I mean, the gravel roads can be very deadly if they're not well-maintained. And I just, I was wondering how many miles of gravel road are left in, in the county, if you know that? I don't know if you know that.
About three-hundred and thirty-five.
Pretty significant.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, I wanted to mention that, thank you for taking care of the gravel roads. And not many folks think about that, but if you ever lost a car on chatter bumps? Not that I have. You all understand what I'm saying?
We have motor graders at all of our garages, some new equipment that were just purchased to maintain those gravels, and again, equipment and people dedicated just to doing the, the dust control on those. So, it's, it's something that, yeah, we pay a lot of attention to as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brede.
Thank you, Chair. Sec. I just have a couple of comments here. The first one is, I just wanted to thank you for you, for the, the support too from your team, for what you guys have been doing for the Sustainable Business Park. There's a lot of collaboration with the Alleghen County Road Commission and also the state, and it's definitely very helpful, and, you know, I appreciate all, all that you're doing. The other thing, I just wanted to shout out to Tim Hogsma in the back. I recently had a constituent from a neighborhood association contact us and a few others about adjusting the speed limit on Sixty-Eighth Street, and he came back with a very detailed response, very well thought out, and, you know, and how speed limit changes are, you know, how they happen. So, I appreciated that, and I always appreciate hearing from him, so, thank you.
Very good. Speed limits are one of the things that is one of the most frequently asked questions. Slow down the cars.
Another hour, another hour.
It's not as, it's not as simple as just changing the sign.
No.
Like one would think.
All right. Anything else? Commissioner Womack.
Thank you, Chair. Just borrowing on some of the comments, I just, for the record, should also remind everyone that the sales tax that we pay on gasoline, much of that revenue does go to schools right now. So, while I certainly can applaud the desire to untangle our revenue streams, we, we can't ignore the fact that if we were to replace that, we'd have to come up with some sufficient replacement revenue for our public schools. My question is tied a little bit to, in the past, you, I think, when I've looked at your previous annual reports, you were able to show the progress of the Pacer ratings over the last few years, notably because of the, the gas tax change in 2015. Have you been able to continue the upward progress in the good and fair condition, or is it now, now that we've had a few years of that change, and you've mentioned the, the fee structure or the fee revenue essentially plateauing, have you also noticed a plateau in the, the increase in good and fair condition roads?
Right. It, it tends to lag a little bit, right? So, you know, the, the improvements we made in the last few years, you know, they kinda show up now, right? So, what I expect will happen is that instead of getting by 2025 to that ninety percent, so taking that seventy-seven percent and moving it up to ninety percent, I think with kinda that, that dropping of our lane mile improvements these last two years, and now the third year this year included, I think we're at a plateau stage. I, I, we're still analyzing the data to determine what that projection is. This year, I think, you know, might get a little bit better. We might get to eighty percent, but again, I think it's gonna flatten out. So, instead of being at ninety percent, I'm expecting we're gonna be at eighty percent by 2025, unless, you know, we can crank out some more road improvements, so.
And I was trying to pull it up before being called on, 'cause I... And, um, I was trying to pull it up before, uh, being called on because I recall from my, my previous time on the Grand Valley Metro Council's Transportation Policy Committee, uh, the long-range plan had in there a, at least for the next, I want to say, two decades, it had a, essentially a projected, what would the revenue shortfall be between getting every road, not including the road commissions, but also, I believe, virtually every road in the, uh, in their, in the NPO's region to good and fair. And I was trying to recall what that, that revenue shortfall was over the, over those two decades. But I was wondering what, if the goal is to get to ninety percent by twenty twenty-five and we may not hit that, what do you expect to be the revenue needs to get us to ninety percent and to keep us at ninety percent?
That's some of the data that we're, we're mining right now to determine, okay, uh, if, for example, there was a increase in funding, state level, county level, whatever, how would it move the needle? Um, you know, we're down in terms of our revenues, at least eight and a half million over these three years. Um, would, if all of that money went into primary roads, for example, would it get that needle back up to that ninety percent? I don't have that answer for you yet. I think it would, it would definitely take a big chunk out of our shortfall, absolutely. Um, sustainable into the future, yeah, it, that's, I think we can, if we can get to that ninety percent, I think we can keep it at ninety percent. And it's because of that preservation program. So, you know, we're, we're doing preservation treatments on roads that we just paved because it's been proven nationally, scientifically, that the quicker we're able to do that preservation treatment on that new road, the longer it will last. And, and that's the key to maintaining that ninety percent. So, but it, 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 it takes money, right? Good roads cost money.
Right.
Poor roads cost more, so.
Thank you.
And with that, good timing. Anything else? If not, thank you so much, Steve, for being here for the presentation. Thank your board for all their hard work. And of course, your team that has joined you here today, thank you for, uh, for coming as well.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right, let's move to our next item, uh, next special order of business. Jerry Miller is here from the Kent Conservation District. Good morning, Jerry. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, I'm Jerry Miller, Director and Chair of the Kent Conservation District. Thank you for providing us an opportunity to do our annual update, uh, and review of some of our accomplishments. Uh, Kent Conservation District has been around for over seventy-five years. And, uh, and as a reminder, we are a local unit of government of the state. So we are a government or organization. Uh, we, our mission is to protect and enhance the soil, water and plant resources of Kent County. And we do that in partnership with, uh, many of the partners that you see on your screen. And, and some of those, of course, provide funding. Now, when we come back and do our FY twenty-two report, we can acknowledge that in FY twenty-two, we received for the first time state operational funds since two thousand and nine. And, and in the memory of anyone that I've been able to contact, uh, for the first time from you, uh, in FY twenty-two, when you approved, uh, an allocation uh, earlier this year. So thank you, uh, for your support. And on your table, you have a copy of our, uh, front and back annual report. And I just, uh, asked you to turn to the back of that, uh, report and you can see our revenue stream that, uh, comes from, uh, many of our partners, uh, that's, uh, during FY, uh, twenty-one. Uh, as I said, uh, we are a local unit of government and therefore our, our board is publicly elected, uh, for four-year terms. And, uh, as you see on your screen, our current board is listed. We have a farm consultant. We have two farmers, uh, and we have a director, uh, who is, uh, an attorney who represents agriculture interests for her firm. In addition, we have, uh, appointed, we can appoint associate directors and they can do everything but vote, uh, make motions and vote. And, uh, recently we appointed Carolyn Johnson, who's pictured in the upper right. And Carolyn, uh, had applied and was selected for the Kent County Agriculture Preservation Board. Uh, she was selected and you approved her appointment to the board, uh, last month as the, to represent, uh, conservation interests on the ag, uh, preservation board. So thank you. Uh, what we want to do today is, uh, I'm going to ask Jesse Schulte, our district manager and, and one of our partner engineers, Lexi Foltz, to give you a, a overview and also to give you some examples of the kinds of work we do, uh, in terms of practices and assisting farmers, uh, here in Kent County. So with that, Jesse Schulte, our district manager.
Nice to see you guys. Um, as you remember, our staff assists the Natural Resources Conservation Service in delivering farm bill programs to Kent County and perform resource management activities that serve the public interest. And we've come to you several times to remind you about our big partnership with several different organizations where we're working to protect two impaired watersheds, the Rogue River and the Indian Mill. Um, as you remember, there's heavy sedimentation in E. coli in these two watersheds. And what we did is we applied for a variety of grants to promote the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. There was two point eight million dollars in federal funds. And then what we wanted to do is promote that to the agricultural producers, promote that to landowners. Um, we received funds from the state's three nineteen grant, and we also received a National Association of Conservation District grant, and that paid for our agricultural technician. So a local agricultural producer to go out and promote, um, these dollars. So we're promoting tree and shrub establishment, nutrient management plans, cover crops. These can be paid for through USDA and RCS funds and then also through our local state, um, dollars. But today we wanted to highlight our engineers that we work with. We have two, um, agricultural engineers, one that's going to be starting next week through the national, um, it's the NIFWIF, National Wildlife Foundation. They give us funds for an engineer. And then today we wanted to introduce you to our C-TI engineer who is paid through the M-DARD NRCS. So I wanted to introduce you to Sammy Johnson. And then we're honored to have, um, a civil engineer from USDA NRCS, Lexi Fights. She worked with us for two years and, um, now she helps train, uh, the other engineers. So, um, I guess without further ado, we invite Lexi up to talk to you about some of the practices we're installing.
Thanks, Jesse.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. Um, as Jesse mentioned, I'm Lexi Fights. I'm a civil engineer with the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. I previously worked for the Kent Conservation District as the C-TI engineer. Um, so Sammy and I are part of an engineering team that provides engineering, um, conservation technical assistance, not only to landowners in Kent County, but to nineteen counties in southwest Michigan. Um, as Jesse also mentioned, uh, NRCS and the Conservation District partner to provide, um, private landowners with conservation technical assistance, um, and financial assistance to implement those conservation practices. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview of what that, um, conservation technical assistance process looks like and then highlight a couple of projects. So in general, um, all of our programs are voluntary. So if a landowner in Kent County is experiencing issues on their land, like erosion in a farm field or, um, nutrient loading in some of their surface waters, they can reach out to the Conservation District and our Natural Resources Conservation Service Field Office for assistance. Uh, our team would then go out and meet with them on their property, discuss what their concerns are, evaluate the site, identify the issues and work to develop what we call a conservation plan, which is aimed to address these concerns while maintaining the intended use of the land, be that farming, recreation, what have you. Um, once this conservation plan is developed, the landowner is then incentivized to implement the plan through that promise of financial assistance. Um, we as engineers provide any, uh, engineering designs necessary to help implement these conservation plans and ultimately end up providing landowners with drafted engineering designs, specifications, and assisting them with obtaining any necessary permits to complete the work, um, be that federal, state or local. Um, we've actually worked on quite a few projects recently where we've needed, uh, erosion and sediment control permits through the road commission. Um, once we provide those plans and specifications to the landowner, they then take that information and hire a local contractor who will complete the work for them. Um, and we work alongside the contractor through the construction process to ensure everything's being done according to plan and to ensure that the landowner is eligible at the end of the project to receive their financial assistance. So it's kind of a roll and overview. There's a lot of details that I won't go into. Um, but now I wanted to highlight a couple of the projects that have been done recently in Kent County. Um, all of these projects have actually been in those two priority watersheds that Jesse mentioned as part of the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. So Indian Mill Creek watershed and Rogue River watershed. The first one is Crudolph Farms, uh, up in Tyrone Township. This site is just north of Kent City High School. Uh, it was a farm field that was experiencing pretty significant gullying, um, through the field in a couple locations. And we went out and determined that, uh, what we call a grass waterway would be a good solution. Um, so these are just generic photos. These are not site-specific that you're seeing on your screen right now. But you can see a before condition. There is a gully forming with concentrated flow. Um, and essentially with a grass waterway, you come in and shape that area out, um, into a larger cross section. You seed it with turf grass that provides a stable base, um, to convey concentrated storm runoff to an outlet. So, uh, I don't have a good before picture of the field, but here we are mid-construction. Uh, the landowner hired a local excavator to come in, um, and shape out the waterway. And we were out there providing quality assurance during the construction process. That's me with the backpack. Um, and here is an after photo. Um, this field actually had two, uh, natural valleys that were experiencing gully erosion. So that's why you see those two kind of like rivers of grass. Those are the grass waterways coming together. Um, this was shortly after seeding took place, so the grass isn't fully established in this photo. That's why it looks a little patchy. Um, and then this is looking downstream towards the end of the waterway. Um, it ended right at Main Street in Kent City. So, uh, and the Crudolph family was actually kind enough to let the Kent Conservation District host an educational field day at this site so we could further promote our mission of protecting Kent County's natural resources and educating the public. Uh, the next site is, uh, Lois Waldecker's site, uh, in Alpine Township, just north of Four Mile off Baumhaft Avenue. Um, Lois has taken part in a number of conservation practices, uh, with NRCS and the Conservation District. But today I'm going to talk specifically about some stream bank stabilization that we did. Um, so again, just a general overview, uh, stream bank stabilization is exactly what it sounds like. Uh, in the beginning condition, you have a stream bank that's sloughing, providing, uh, a lot of sediment into the waterway. Uh, we come in, we stabilize it by peeling back the banks, doing some hard armoring with rock if necessary, seeding and vegetating the upper banks. Um, and then after a certain period of time, that vegetation takes deeper root and holds the soil in place. So this is a before photo of the stream that we were, uh, working on. As you can see, that right-hand bank, um, is very unstable. There were large chunks of sod that were sloughing off into the waterway. Um, this is a small tributary to Indian Mill Creek and actually, uh, again, ended at, um, a road culvert. So we coordinated with the road commission on this project, not only for permitting purposes, but also to do some protection around one of their culverts. Um, this is a photo of mid-construction. You can see the culvert there in the foreground, um, in the center. You can kind of see some of the hard armoring rock that we placed around it to prevent scour. Um, when we originally got out to the site, there was significant scour around the culvert. Um, and it was starting to encroach on undermining the pavement. So, um, came in, shaped, shaped the banks out, uh, provided temporary stabilization in the form of erosion control mats and some silt fence. And then this is looking downstream towards, towards the culvert. You can see in the right-hand photo, uh, kind of in the upper right-hand corner where the culvert is. But that's that bank that we were initially trying to stabilize. Um, you can see we placed some rock riprap there to help hold that soil in place. And on the upper banks, you see the mulch that will all be vegetated this year. Um, this stream we determined to be particularly flashy, meaning that the water level in it rises significantly following storm events. That's why that rock extends so high up on the bank. So, um, Lois was able to hire a local, um, ecological restoration contractor to complete most of this work. And then she also partnered with the Kent Conservation District strike team to plant a majority of the, um, native shrubs and plants that'll provide that deep-rooted, um, woody vegetation. Uh, and finally, uh, Dubsky Farms, H&R Farms, also up in Alpine Township off of Seven Mile Road, um, also in the Indian Mill Creek watershed. Uh, it might be a little difficult to see in this photo, but the, uh, circled area, um, is an area that was experiencing a lot of head cutting. They were losing a lot of soil from this kind of bold area of their field to, uh, a drainage ditch. And you can see in the foreground, some of that sedimentation. Um, here we determined that a great stabilization structure, uh, was necessary. It's exactly what it sounds like. It's something that you put in to keep the ground in place. Um, and there's multiple varieties depending on what your site conditions dictate. We opted for, uh, a rock chute, which can be seen in that, uh, cluster of four photos in the upper left. So here's some more before photos. You can see kind of the extent of the erosion. Um, that's one of our NRCS partners, Matt, in, uh, the picture on the left. And you can see some of that erosion was as tall or as deep as he is. This is us walking the site with the landowners, talking about kind of what their goals were for the property and what some of the ideas were to stabilize it. And then here on the right, this is immediately after, um, the project was, uh, the, the rock was placed. So immediately after they shaped it out and placed that hard armoring, um, all of those bare areas will be vegetated this year. This work was completed late last fall, early winter. So no time for the grass to take. Um, but again, the landowner worked with a local excavator to complete the work. Um, and they did, they did a great job. I'm sure when we go out there this summer, it'll be all green around all of that riprap. So, um, that concludes the, the projects that we wanted to highlight. So thank you again for having us. And I think we'll take any questions now.
Well, good. Thank you. Uh, maybe you can bring your team back up and we'll see what, what questions. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for this presentation, especially this last part. Kind of strikes a chord. A lot of these properties are actually in my area. Um, and I, I believe, uh, Commissioner Ponstein was with me when we went to some farms in Maryland where they were doing this probably twenty years ago. And they're kind of on the cutting edge of doing some of this stuff. And I'm, I'm so happy to see it's taking place here now. Um, as far as funding, um, how much of the total cost, if, if each farmer was to check all the appropriate boxes, how much of the cost will they get back? Is it a hundred percent back or is it a portion or?
It's a portion. So it depends on what's being installed. Generally, um, NRCS ballpark said it'll be fifty to seventy-five percent of the installed cost. However, recently with supply chain issues and increases, um, in the cost of labor, that number has been fluctuating a bit. And so the USDA has actually been, uh, providing, uh, temporary emergency additional funding to try to offset that financial burden. Um, in the case of these three sites that I highlighted, all of these sites, because they were in those priority watersheds, um, they were also eligible for additional financial assistance, um, through the three nineteen grant held by the Conservation District. And so that provided, I think, complete coverage.
Oh, so they, they actually recouped all their money through the two?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is there any efficiencies on the farm after completing this that will allow them a better yield somehow? Or is this strictly kind of a, um, something to keep bad stuff out of our water system?
Yeah. So these three projects specifically were more for, focused on water quality and sedimentation. But we do also offer, um, practices and financial assistance for those practices that are aimed at, um, improving soil health, which can improve yields. So cover crops, one of the, uh, items that Jesse mentioned earlier. Um, Jerry could actually speak to this much better than I could, the science behind why cover crops improve soil health. But, um, by planting cover crops, not only are you preventing erosion in your fields, but you're also rebuilding your soil and the organic matter, um, and can help increase, yeah, your yield.
Just one, one other question if I could.
Sure. One more.
As far as the total need, um, doing this type of work, do you have enough money to cover, let's say, every farm in Kent County right now if they all wanted to jump in at the same time? Is this a, so you, you somehow qualify these farms?
A million, that's that.
Uh, so the, the, the answer to that question is, I'll start at the state level. Uh, in last year in FY twenty- And last year in FY '21, NRCS through the farm bill programs brought in roughly $36 million to the state. And they had, and I don't have the number off the top of my head, Commissioner, but they had a lot more requests for funding than they had funds available through the farm bill program.
These farms are qualified as to need, in the most impact, they'd probably go to the top of the list.
Right. Right. And yes, and there are priority lists. And Lexi and Jesse could answer that better than I, but.
That's okay. Generally, I was wondering how that works.
I think for me in Kent County, though, we still have $1 million of the Regional Conservation Partnership Program funds. So we do have some resistance from agricultural producers that are reluctant to have the federal government funds or have the federal government on their property. And we try to work with them that we're working with eagle, non-regulatory. So these three properties that we're highlighting, normally we keep the landowner's name confidential. Everything is private. But because they also participated in 319 state funds, they wanted to. And several of these farms would not have installed these practices without the funds, like Dubsky Farms, they could not have afforded it. So on my side of it, I feel like we still need to do more promotion because we have so much funds that we need these producers to step up and want to have a site visit from us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Ponstein.
So Jerry, thanks for being here, your whole staff. I was joined by Commissioner Hennessy at your annual meeting. What was really impressive is not just the presentation, but to get and meet your staff and more so your partners in this endeavor that you do. And I really don't have a question. I just want to point something out that, you know, we often question of the funding of the conservation districts. You know, I look at it the other way. If the conservation district wasn't here and we didn't have them, the amount of money that you folks generate through grants, through the farm bills, and, you know, everything else. I'll steal from Steve Warren. Yeah, you know, good roads are good, bad roads are expensive. I mean, the same thing can be said about clean water. It enhances the life of people. It's an asset for the county. And certainly, dirty and polluted water is very unhealthy for the people that live here and, you know, a danger for the whole county. So I appreciate all your work and the hard work. And I know it's been a battle on funding. Hopefully, at the state level, we can continue to advocate to keep that funding that was taken away in 2009 as a regular amount and even more amount. And certainly, I hope that my fellow commissioners see the value of what you do and that we need to be at the table too. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Legrand.
I have a two-part question. One is what's the timetable on which you might hope to see improvements in the water quality? Less sedimentation, et cetera? And then the other one is the E. coli that's present. Are we talking mostly like septic fields would be responsible for that in these areas? Or, you know, municipal overflows or where's that coming from?
I'll take the first part. With these projects specifically that I highlighted, there can be almost immediate impact to the water quality downstream because we are stopping that head cutting or that gullying from continuing to occur. And then long-term reductions as well. Going back to the question about improving yields in fields by implementing cover crops in addition to these erosion control measures that we highlighted, that prevents further loss of soil from the, you know, fields, what we call real erosion or sheet erosion. And that has a much larger impact as well. And then you're also not losing nutrients such as fertilizers into those surface waters. So Jesse can speak a little bit more to the E. coli portion.
Can just add on the bacterial E. coli. So there are multiple sources, as you point out, Commissioner. Inadequate functioning septic systems and aging septic systems and lack of functional absorption fields is one issue. Another one would be animal feeding operations. And I'm not referring to CAFOs, which are regulated according to EPA, but just animal feeding operations. And then as we talk to a lot of our clients and so forth, wildlife is. And we had a study in the Flat River watershed among Moncom, Ionia, and Kent County. And we documented wildlife as being one of the major sources of E. coli as well. So those are three. Obviously, there are others, but that would be sources for E. coli.
Very good. Anyone else? If not, thank you so much, Jerry and your team, for being here this morning. We appreciate all the information, all the hard work that you do. And we're looking forward to continuing to partner with you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And we look forward to continuing to partner with you and coming back each year to provide an annual update. And we're always available to answer any questions or provide comments with our directors, our staff. So thanks again for your support this year in funding and look forward to seeing you in the future.
Great. Thank you. All right, we'll move to our third special order business. And Mr. Dowd, Jeff is here to walk us through the financial overview.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me today. I don't know how I got placed after those two presentations, but we'll try to make it interesting here, so.
It compel you to be more succinct then.
I'll try to be brief. So I'm going to be here to review the 2021 financial overview. If you turn, I think you all have a book in front of you. I'll refer to some pages, just do some highlights. So if you refer to the cover letter, this book summarizes the significant economic demographic and financial information of the county. And this is primarily used by the retail bondholders, institutional investors, and rating agencies, the elected officials, of course, the citizens of Kent County and businesses doing work here in Kent County. This book is prepared annually by my deputy Marvin, who I'd like to recognize for his great work in putting this book together. On the next few pages, pages eight through 11, really are an economic profile of the county. They outline the facility and transportation available in the county and travel times for residents to get to their places of employment and recreation. And then other economic statistics include population, education, and employment numbers. So just various items of information that the users find. There we go. Moving on to page 13 is the property tax rate table. You can see in 2021, we had a general millage of 4.1850 with special millages of 1.9671. And you can see the various breakouts of the millage. So we outline those for the users of this book. Moving on to page 15, you can see the growth of SCV and taxable value in the middle of the page there. You can see last year, we had a change of 9.4% SCV change and 7% taxable. And you can see going back several years, we've had very significant growth year to year in both SCV and taxable value. So that's good to see. Moving on to page 19. I'd like to highlight the revenues from the state of Michigan. You can see in that table, this includes mostly revenue sharing. It's been fairly consistent. And if you recall, there was a dip in 2020 when they replaced one of our payments with CARES Act dollars. We ended up receiving more money in total. I think it was four and a half million versus a $3 million revenue sharing payment. But that does show as a dip here because that was recognized in another location in our financials. Moving on to page 20. Legal debt margin. So legally, where the county is enabled to borrow 10% of the SCV, which would be over $3 billion of debt. We have no intention of ever doing that. Our current level is $388 million or 1.14%. And you can see in the table in the bottom, our gross debt is at $388 million, but there's $301 million of self-supporting, which means a lot of those are airport bonds or bonds secured by other revenue sources. So actually, the net debt of the county is $87 million. Moving on to page 24. The rating agencies in particular are always interested in our funding of our legacy costs, which is pension and OPEB. Since I've dated this report, our pension was 105.83% funded. So that's very good status. If you move on to OPEB on page 28, our OPEB funding was at 67%, while not as high as the pension. We made significant strides in getting that funding up. And again, the rating agencies and others are not really affected by that number being not 100% funded. Our contribution rate is very, very low. As an additional note, the boards did vote to lower the rate of return in both those boards to 6.5% from 6.75% earlier this year, which is another conservative move going forward. On page 38, we're going to move on briefly to the general fund. See at the end of '21, unaudited numbers. We had a surplus of $2.27 million, bringing our fund balance at the end of the year to $84.8 million. And across the page, you'll see the breakout of that fund balance. You can see 44.9 is assigned to cash flow and then 30.1 million to economic stabilization. And again, it was up from 82.5 million last year. Moving on to page 43. I'd like to highlight the CIP fund. We made a significant investment to strategic capital again at the end of '21, $10 million. So you can see in that change in fund balance up from 9.2 to 16.6 million with a fund balance of 55.9 million in our CIP. So our CIP projects are very well-funded. And I believe we had about $23 million in the strategic capital fund at the end of 2021. Next page, page 44. I'd like to highlight the airport revenues. As you all know, during the COVID, we had significant reductions, revenues of 33.2 million. '21 showed revenues of 51.8 million, a significant increase. So and as been reported previously, I believe they're almost back to their 2019 numbers. And you can see on the next page, page 45, the debt coverage went up from 1.51 to 2.1. So a nice recovery there as well for them. Page 45, oh, sorry, that was the debt coverage. Page 48. The lodging excise tax fund is always of interest. You can see in '20, we had $5.1 million of hotel motel taxes, significant rebound to just under $9 million in '21. So also great rebound there in the lodging excise taxes. The remainder of the book outlines the fiscal policies and the recent economic news, which are always of interest to the rating agencies. Some very good articles in there on growth around Kent County. So that's my summary of the book. Just a couple other comments. When we have our rating agency calls with S&amp;P and Moody's, you know, some of the things they put as positive comments to support our AAA rating, our proactive management with comprehensive financial multi-year planning and policies and strong institutional frameworks, very strong finances with sustained reserves and well-funded pension and OPEB plans. Also, history of solid financial management, conservative revenue projections, and strong liquidity. So that's why we keep such a close eye on those types of things. Potential changes that could lead to potential downgrades include material deterioration of available operations or, I'm sorry, operating fund balance and liquidity, significant deviation from projected cash flows or budget performance or debt were to deteriorate materially. So that's why we keep track of all these things. That's why we do this book every year. And then with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. And also thank you to Marvin for this. This is a great resource for all of us to draw on. So any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Hey, OPEB, where is in the book our OPEB liability? That's being kind of put it, you know, so it had to be on the balance sheet, I think.
Yep, it's on page 28 of the book, yep.
For years, a lot of municipalities would kind of hide that liability. So on page 28.
Yes, sir.
So I see that the net position is 67%, so we're making progress, right?
Yeah, very good progress. We continue to fund that over and above the actual recommended rate, so.
Okay, great. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I paid enough attention in business school to know that what you have to do for accounting and reality are not always the same thing. But I'm curious about, so I know this 24, 25, 28, 29, there's this assumption of 2.5% inflation baked into these.
That's for wage growth you're speaking of?
Yeah, for pension liability, for the OPEB liability. That's probably in another spot too. But like, what is the actual inflation being significantly higher than 2.5 due to some of these fund balances, budgets, et cetera?
Obviously, if we have continued inflation of, you know, 8, 9%, we'd have to readjust those assumptions over time. Long-term, we feel, and these are long-term plans. These are not year-to-year. We don't make quick adjustments based upon one or two years of data. We look at this very, very long-term. So right now, we're still seeing 2.5 as a long-term projection. That's what the feds are shooting for. So we don't see a need at this point to adjust that number.
All right, anyone else? Well, that's the benefit of going last, Jeff, see how that works. I do have one other question, though, before you stand down. On page 15, you have a graph in there, which is, I know you give this to us every year, which is the taxable value as a percentage of our SCV. And the line continues to go down, which I think generally means that our SCV is going up, but as a percentage of taxable value, that is going down. What's the significance of that?
Yeah, if you look at the table above it, you can see the SCV change consistently exceeds the taxable value change. And as you know, taxable value is limited by the taxing statutes in the state of Michigan. So as there's high appreciation in property values, you'll see SCV, whether it's uncapped, it's unlimited. It goes up whatever the numbers reflect. So that's when that gap occurs because taxable is limited. And you can see we're about 76%. I think that might be the lowest percentage in history. What that does do is provide us some downside protection. So if we were to fall into a recessionary period where there was no growth in taxable value or limited growth, we have that gap we could make up with SCV growth. So it does provide us some downward protection. But again, it's the tax laws in Michigan limiting the taxable growth, but not the SCV growth. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does. But from an operations or practical perspective, does it impact the number of transactions? Because as I understand, each one of those uncapped if there's a transaction.
Correct, yeah. If a property changes hands, it's uncapped by the legislation. So let's say you have a property, it's 100,000 SCV, but 50,000 taxable. If you sold that, in theory, that 50,000 gap would close, yes.
So if everybody in the county were to just sell their property wants.
Yes. Although then you hit the other issue about the capping.
The Headley.
The Headley rollback, so, yes.
Any other questions? Not, thank you for that update. And again, thank you for the, I'm sorry. Commissioner Antor, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, thank God for Headley. I think Headley's a great law, great, you know, for the people because it allows us to keep our money. Whenever I hear anybody questioning things of that nature, like, you know, how is it affecting us here at the county? I'd say it's affecting us very well because we have more money to spend here in the county. That's my comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. All right, let's move to our next item on the agenda, which is public comment. If there is anyone here from the public that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners on matters on our agenda only at this point, you may do so now. Please identify yourself by naming your address, and you have up to three minutes. Good morning.
How you doing? My name is DeAndre Jones. I stay on the northwest side of Grand Rapids, Michigan. My address is 967 Tamarack Avenue. I am in full support of these environmental friendly projects. I really care about the land. I do believe there needs to be some diversity and inclusion into these projects because it's a lot of black people, it's a lot of minorities, it's a lot of people of color that also care about the land, the air, the water, everything that we breathe. But those people are also at disparities of policies, that legislation, at every single level of government. It's a lot of air pollution. It's a lot of politicians getting dollars from corporations that want to pollute our air. So at least nine million people that die from air pollution. And so I appreciate all of these projects because these are actually contributing to the. I've never seen an environmentally friendly or environmentally verified farm until I came here to the county. So I'm maybe unable to educate myself. So I appreciate all of these projects. I appreciate these presentations. That is great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, if not, I will call on, my apologies to Commissioner Hennessy. I think tradition is that we will call on Commissioner Legrand for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda for today's date.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? If not, Adam Clark, will you please take the role?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Antor. Boelter. Vice Chair Brevi.
Yes.
Commissioners Blakowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen a's, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item eight A for resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stuck. I moved resolution sixty-five of today's date, the request to add one full-time fleet equipment specialist to fleet services.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner McLeod. Discussion? Commissioner Antor?
Thank you. Is this through attrition? I think we lost someone out there recently.
This is an addition.
This is an addition?
Yes. We've had a significant increase in the number of vehicles over the years without an accompanying increase in staff. So this is an addition.
Thank you.
And I think it also calls for bringing some more maintenance work in-house as opposed to permanent.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, Madam Clerk, will you take the role?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution sixty-five, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Bolter. Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bulkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixty-five is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight B, and I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move resolution sixty-six. It's from the Community Corrections and its authorization to submit a community corrections comprehensive plan and grant application.
Support.
Thank you, and supported by Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments? I see none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution sixty-six, Commissioners Antor. Bolter. Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bulkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixty-six is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight C, and I will again call on Commissioner Morgan.
I thank you once again, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move resolution sixty-seven. It's from our Board of Commissioners and Fiscal Services, and it's the authorization of summer two thousand twenty-two tax levy.
Support.
It was, it was supported in, in almost unison, but I think Commissioner Jones, you were loudest. So Commissioner Jones supported. Questions or comments?
Just wanted a bipartisan motion.
Just a little quicker next time, Commissioner. No other questions or comments. All right, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution sixty-seven, Commissioners Antor. Bolter. Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bulkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixty-seven is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll move to eight D, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move resolution sixty-eight of today's date, Mental Health Court Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration with the SAMSA grant for the Circuit Court.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Commissioner. And it was, it was supported by Commissioner Bulkowski, I thought, but.
No, it was Womack. Well, he said yes.
Gave you the chance.
I said, yes, support. I said, yes, support is one word.
I support the next motion at our next meeting.
Question?
Questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I have a question for the Sheriff Department, for our sheriff.
Yes, our sheriff is here. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Sheriff. In twenty seventeen, when we established the mental court, I remember that we were doing it to help make sure the influx of mental, people who needed mental services weren't coming to our Kent County jail and being placed where they didn't need to be placed. And at that time, it was ten percent of the jail was made up, was the number that was put out there. Do you know if those numbers have shrunk since we've started this? How, how are we looking when it comes to percentage of those that need those services?
There are, there are a lot of factors that have played in that in the intervening years between twenty seventeen. So that's ten percent of severely mentally impaired would be, generally speaking, in custody. It's not typically the target population per se of the mental health court completely. The mental health court has a lot to do with multiple factors, including your charge status, what, what level of charge you are, how many charges you've had, many other things. So most of the individuals that we see in our facility over a long term are not eligible for mental health court. That's generally more the public peace kind of charges that used to have people end up in custody for longer periods of time. Many of the individuals that we're seeing there right now have been delayed in forensic evaluation for very serious charges because of COVID and a number of things. So our numbers are, I don't know what my exact percentage is today, but I would say it's in excess of what it was in twenty seventeen.
Okay, that was one of the factors they had listed. Can you name any other factors where it has been successful at helping?
I think it's an important program, and I think it has been successful. But I don't think you can play that out in statistics. I think it's the human being, individuals who have their needs met by a mental health court. There's a lot of individual factors that relate to each and every single one of the incarcerations. And to work with somebody in a case management status, to work their way through court and navigate the system is powerful. And I definitely have seen it work and improve the return rates. But you're not really going to see it in statistics so much.
Okay, and just want to thank you and your staff, especially the undersheriff. There were times where we had that issue come up, people who may have had mental situations, but were picked up by the police and they didn't realize it. So we'd have to call the Sheriff Department to get a little help and get them the assistance. And your, your staff always stepped up to the plate and was very responsive to our community. So I want to thank the Sheriff Department for that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, yes, Commissioner Legrand.
I just want to speak briefly about my appreciation and gratitude for the, for the presence of these courts. I had a friend recently refer to alternative courts as appropriate courts. And the fact that we're having such good outcomes from them really speaks to how appropriate they are for the people going through them. And I just want to point out that we now have a mental health court for juveniles as well, which I consider a really good sign and hoping for great things. Thank you, Chair.
Great, great. Anyone else? If not, I'll again thank the sheriff for all your hard work. I think, though, it is Judge Rossi that has voluntarily stepped to the plate to serve as the judge in the mental health court and is doing a great job, so. All right, nothing else? Madam Clerk, will you take the role?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution sixty-eight, Commissioners Antor. Bolter. Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bulkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution sixty-eight is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone else from the public that wishes to address the board relative to any of our jurisdictional matters, you may do so again, and identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Me again. My name is Deandre Jones. I stay at nine six seven Tamarack Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Haven't moved since you were here earlier?
Nah, I haven't moved yet. But I'd like to talk about a couple of things. I see that you guys have, I wouldn't call it the participatory budgeting, but I've seen that you guys put the survey out for a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars for projects and ideas for the county. I like that. I would like for you guys to try to advertise that to the South Side. We are in the second worst city for economic development for African-American people, the city of Grand Rapids. And so I would like for you guys to put some type of effort into making sure that the South Side knows about this. The people that are poor, impoverished, the people that face disparities every day, the people that actually need these funds, the people that need to know that these funds are out there. I mean, we have two million dollars in the city of Grand Rapids. I've held several meetings. I link up on the South Side of Grand Rapids, educating the community. I'm hosting a participatory budgeting process meeting on the, in the Hispanic community, because only five to six percent of that community has been involved in the city's process. And so I'm going to be there June second at the Health Department when you guys host an information session on this because I want to try to engage and educate my community, my county, as many people as I can on the possibility of tapping into these funds. I would like for you guys to potentially partner with the city to try to help them to get more funding for their budgeting process because two million dollars isn't going to do it. But the county has a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. That's amphitheater money almost. So like, that is crazy. And so I would really like the county to try to do some type of work, partner more with the city. Please make sure that, I want to make sure that the whole county, it's almost six hundred thousand people that you guys represent, but I want to make sure that the South Side, because even this building is in Grand Rapids, Michigan. If you go a little bit further south, there's a lot of people that need these opportunities and need to know that those opportunities exist. Also, I was that kid that brought the gun to EK years ago, maybe like ten plus years ago. And I seen it was a shooting there. It was some African-American kids. I actually went to the Kent County Juvenile this year and spoke to every single unit there. I used to be in child unit, I used to be in Bravo unit, I used to be in Delta, I used to be on Level Three. And so I'm a local community leader. I've been through it. There's nothing you really can't tell me that I couldn't relate. And so I really want you guys to, if you see me, please let me know any way that I can help the county, if I can educate people, if I can go talk to some groups of youth. I've been through it. I've lived through it. Our body been, really been through it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Could you just do a point of order real quick?
Everyone can raise a point of order.
We had a gentleman here that always speaks to us about the information booth. And he left because maybe our special orders of business went a little long for him. Is, could somebody provide me with his number? I'd like to call him and.
We can get that to you afterwards.
I'd appreciate that.
I think we know who that is.
I don't know if we have his number, but he, he usually hangs in there as long as he needs to.
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
He, he came and addressed the airport board yesterday and just thanked us for having a fine airport. So I don't know if it was the same thing today, Tom.
Still, I agree.
Because he said, I'm not here about the, you know, the information booth. So we all went, okay. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you were addressing me, weren't you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I think we can cover that for you, Commissioner. All right, nothing else? We will move to the administrative report.
Yes, I'm mid-county administrators conference up at Crystal Mountain. And the conference is focusing on really three, one of the best sessions, I think, I've been to on this. The status of acquiring talent, motivating talent, compensating talent and retaining talent pre-pandemic, during the pandemic and post-pandemic, and really fascinating, I think, some of the different phases. And the bottom line really aligns well with where we're going because right now, the focus is on culture and focusing on what we, who we are as an organization, why we make a difference, why we would be appealing to somebody who would, who would be out in the market, balancing, you know, their choice among various employers and, and experiences. So I think the six Cs initiative is right on target with that, and so excited to get moving on that soon. Also, we met with a group of animal control, animal shelter stakeholders last week at the Cooperative Extension Office. We had a good turnout, and the proposed changes to both the shelter and to the animal control, moving the animal control function to the sheriff's office, were received very well by the group in attendance. Also, we had a series of meetings in Lansing last week as we support to get the funding for the Crisis Mental Health Center over the hump. So that's it for today.
You said you had it done. Yeah, questions? All right, let's move to the next item, then reports. Any reports? Yes, Vice Chair Breavy.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Stuck. We had an airport board meeting yesterday, so this did not get into the reports for this week. But I have a couple of updates from the airport, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Coleman and Commissioner McLeod. We interviewed four candidates for the open position on the airport board, and we'll be coming up with a nomination soon. We had some really great applicants, and I think that, you know, those maybe who aren't selected would serve well in other boards and committees. As far as the airport goes, currently, we're at about ninety-five percent of our two thousand nineteen numbers, which I think is incredible. Twenty, or, excuse me, April, I think we were at ninety-eight percent with like passenger traffic. So really fantastic numbers after all that we've dealt with in the pandemic. And according to our firm, we have Plant Moran, we just had a recent audit done, and it was a clean audit. Everything looks great. And they did comment that the airport has recovered faster than other airports of its size and throughout the country, you know, compared to other airports they service. So we're in a really good position there. And we did hear an update too on concourse A. Right now, they're working with concessions and retail to provide a really great experience for people that come through our airport. And it's definitely going to have a local flavor. I'm really excited about the opportunities that we have with that to let West Michigan shine. So it was a great meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Other reports, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I am on the Supervisors Township Group meeting. And this past month, I had a missed due to illness, but wanted to thank our sheriff, who came out and presented to all the supervisors there. I talked to the chair of that group. Thought the dialogue was fabulous. Again, one more great example of communication with the sheriff's office and our local officials to help things run smoothly and give them a chance to have some questions, answers, and talk about options where the sheriff department can engage and be more helpful with our local units of government. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? I see none. We'll move on to miscellaneous. Anyone have any miscellaneous comments? Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I, I'd like to start by saying that the county here is nineteen commissioners. We represent twenty-one townships, five villages and nine cities. And it, it was very great during the CARES Act that we were able to get bipartisan support for giving the city of Grand Rapids, Michigan, twenty million dollars. And we also led a lot of the things that I see the city of Grand Rapids doing now as they give a million dollars to the third ward. We were able to give, after giving Grand Rapids, the city of Grand Rapids, twenty million dollars, we were able to give the school, Grand Rapids Public Schools, two million dollars. We were able to partner with the Grand Rapids Chamber of Commerce and do the first business clinics, grant-writing clinics within the city to help explain to young people, explain to people exactly what the CARES Act grant was and how it could help those communities. And we increased minority grants by a significant amount. In two days, I and the Grand Rapids Chamber had a chance to sit down with over one hundred businesses in the third ward. And I'm very glad to see the city of Grand Rapids duplicating some of the things that the county did last year. We will also be doing some things within the community in the third ward to let people know that the ARPA funds are quite different from the CARES Act and be able to help them do the best at making sure that funds do come into the third ward. But I do have to remind people that at the county level, we are representing, like I said, twenty-one different townships, five villages and nine cities, and a lot of that money has to touch the entire county. Also, want to thank the sheriff briefly for her work after the shooting at East Kentwood. It, it sends a great message that crimes can be solved and that there are repercussions for crimes. Everybody is innocent until proven guilty, but they were able to locate the cars within twenty-four hours. They were able to bring in viable suspects. Also, Sheriff Department, I had his off to the officer who did get an injury from a gunshot.